The regular meeting for DeSaras City Council for December the 5th, 2017 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to have a moment of silence right now. Melvin Smith served on DeSaras City Council from 2000 to 2001. He passed away this last week. May he rest in peace. Roll call please.
McKeever.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Wirebaugh.
Here.
Ritter.
Here.
Sad.
Here.
O'Rourke.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the November 21st, 2017 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes. Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wirebaugh to accept the minutes from November the 21st, 2017 meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passed. For at the time of our meeting, will we grant permission for visitors to speak? Mr. Close, if you would, you were first to ask. You state your name and your address, please.
Hey, my name's Richard Close, and 180 Shell Avenue. And I was wondering what we have to do to get Walnut Street two-way all the way. A number of years ago, three or four years ago, I brought it to, at that time I knew she was a councilwoman, she said, "Well, she took it to the traffic commission." And the letter I got back said the traffic commission said that GE didn't want to make that down to Shell Avenue two-way. So, I thought something's not right, so I called the CEO at that time of GE, went over and talked to him. He said nobody from the traffic commission ever talked to him. He said he would even come to council and state that he had no problem with it. So, I don't know what's going on. Somebody's going to get hurt out there because people come flying down the wrong way, a lot of trucks coming down there the wrong way. I guess our street says no truck traffic, but the other day there was nine semis coming down that street. And that street is just as wide as a lot of the other streets that already have two-way traffic. So, I think it needs to be looked at seriously to make in a section from Southern Avenue up to Shell Avenue two-way. Also, something else I have, and I'm not sure, Mr. Reeser, do I address you as a mayor or your honor?
Jeff is good.
Well, I wondered if you've been judging here lately, so I guess you didn't know.
Been what though lately?
Been judged here lately.
Oh, judged. What in the last half hour?
Pardon?
Go ahead.
I can't for the life of me figure out, you know, I thought Mr. Reeser was a public employee, I thought the fire department was a public employee, but for some reason everything is top secret on what's going on right now with the party. And I think us as the public have a right to know what is going on. I can't see what the big secret, the man served for twenty-nine and a half years, and all of a sudden he's bad. He takes one meeting and that's illegal. You know, I just don't understand it. But that's neither here nor there. It will go nowhere, we won't hear nothing until it's done, I'm sure. It's going to be a big secret until then. And that's not right for the people. And the last thing is, our streets are deplorable. I guess they're done blacktopping for the year. Is that true?
Yeah, they're closed now.
They took the shorts of any street they didn't get them done in.
What street are you talking about?
Pardon?
What street are you talking about?
Southern for one thing, from Hoppley to Sandusky. Also, there's a lot of streets like intersections that it's like roller coaster when you go over the intersection. Sandusky and Oakwood is one. Walnut and Southern, there's a lot of them around town. I don't know who patched them or what they done, but it's a very poor job, and I don't know why there wasn't a little bit of planning done to get them done before the bad weather got here.
Do you know why they're torn up, Mr. Close?
Pardon?
Do you know why they're torn up?
Yeah, I know why they're torn up, but out of no reason, they can't be fixed. They were torn up, they're ruined.
We had to put new storm sewers in.
Yeah, I know.
And so, once they fill that back in, that has to take some time to settle. So, we patch them temporarily, then in the spring after it settles, we'll come back.
Next year or the year after.
What do you think? I mean, I mean...
I don't know. With the city anymore, I don't know.
Well, I think our street crews do a very good job.
Pardon?
I think our street crews do a very good job.
I'm not saying the street crews done it.
I'm going to...
It's the people in charge making sure that's done, the administration. It's not the street crews, they can only do what they're told to do.
And it's a huge project. We let everybody know in the springtime that the town was going to be torn up for several reasons. There's a lot of projects going on this year, and there will be a lot of them going on next year. And unfortunately, there's only so much we can do. When you have to dig up the ground, some of those storm sewers are fifteen, twenty feet deep. And as much as we would like to snap our fingers and be able to fill that in and come by with an asphalt truck the next day, that isn't how things work out. I'll just give you a good example. Bland Avenue, we had to have a custom-made piece put in there, and then that took about three weeks, and then they come back and we have to let it settle for another couple of weeks, then we just come back in and patch it. We don't neglect any of these things. We know it's torn up, we live here too. You know, we know, we know there's issues with some things, but we...
They didn't put anything in it from Sandusky and Oakwood, and that's a terrible drop-in intersection. There was no sewer, no nothing put in.
Sandusky and Oakwood, I haven't heard a single complaint about that.
Drive sometimes.
This is the first one. I do drive quite often. We have to look at it again. I hear you, but there's nothing that can be done now.
I know, I understand.
We won't start our mill and pave till probably June or July of next year. That's when, you know, that's when the asphalt factories open up and we get back at it. And we're already planning on some streets, so I will certainly put that intersection down. We go through, you look and see where patches, you'll see major patchwork done that we see that have to be temporarily done. We pick that up during the year, and we add those types of, Nor Sandusky's a good example. We didn't think it was going to last until next year's paving project. But we rely on residents like yourself to come and let us know, so we appreciate their letting us know. And we do apologize for the inconvenience of Southern Avenue. I know, it's no fun to drive down. We drive down it ourselves, but some thing has to be done.
In reference to Walnut Street going into two-way, will I get into the traffic commission?
I can...
I'm just about ready to ask for someone to make a motion to put it into traffic commission, so...
Well, I wrote the traffic commission, actually looked at it this time, the last time they didn't. Like I said, somebody's going to get hurt because there's a lot of, especially a lot of GE traffic going the wrong way on that street. Now, I don't think they should have any more rights than any other citizen going the wrong way. And the same way with semis. There's a lot of semis that disregard them, sign, and just drive one down. And before somebody gets hurt there, like I said, it's not that big a threat from Southern to Shell. And it's just as wide as a lot of the other streets that are, you can't, traffic two-way.
Okay, I need a motion then to put Southern to Shell possibility of being a two-way street into the traffic commission. Did I, what did I say, Southern? Walnut, I'm sorry. Walnut Street. Who was that?
Second.
Steven. Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. O'Rourke to put Walnut Street from Southern to Shell Avenue into the traffic commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Anyone else to address council? I'm sorry, yes.
Well, we're on the subject. For the mayor, I think last time, I recall, the traffic commission, we were talking about this street, Walnut, I don't know if it was the fire chief or somebody said, or police chief, but anyway, if it's made two ways, it's going to eliminate all parking on the street.
That's, if I remember right, that's a big issue, we'd have to eliminate parking. And I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how long it has been since we've talked about that, but we can look at it again. We certainly can, and see what the fire chief and the police chief and streets will take under advisement and see. I mean, we're not opposed to it, but it works.
Yes, we were also told when you filled one of the schools, I mean, it would automatically become two-way. I don't know what happened to that. I think Dan Ross was mayor at that time.
I don't know. I couldn't answer that one.
It's wide enough for two ways, it's no narrower than one down from Oakwood.
Well, if you leave your phone number, we'll make sure we call you when that traffic commission meeting comes up, and what it'll be discussed. So, before you leave tonight, leave your phone number, or call our office, you know. And the only other thing I would say too, if, you know, people see, you know, issues with streets, call our office, you know, 562-6767. We're happy to, you know, we don't ignore those calls, we check, everything gets checked out, so...
Okay, the positive secrets are with us this season. Your name and address, please.
I am Joe Graham, 859 South Spring Street.
Carolyn Chiron, 1065 East Hill Avenue.
Okay, first of all, we'd like to welcome, we've got some new city council members who are going to be coming on, and congratulate everyone for getting to the elections. As you may know, the farmers markets and how it worked for this season, the positive secrets have been asked to come back next season, all curvy Saturdays, we've accepted. And Carolyn and I compete in the kitchen, so we have something different every week. We'd like to thank Carly's for sponsoring the Broad West during that time. Carolyn and I were told by Mayor Reeser that the tulip tree we donated from Richards has been planted at Allmiller Park. However, we've not seen any recognition such as pictures of things, or anything like that. So, if you want to take a picture and put it up on Facebook, we'd sure appreciate it. And let us, where is it located exactly?
Right by Kids Kingdom.
Okay.
It's going to be providing shade for Kids Kingdom.
For centuries.
Yeah, I think that we've already taken a picture, but we haven't sent it to you yet. We'll...
Thank you. Okay, the Positive Secrets have been a 501(c)(3) organization for four years now. We're very proud of what we do, and use every avenue we're able to as for advertising our events. We're coming on city council to help gain the recognition of who we are. Post those pictures and please thank us. Thank us on access TV. We're now working on our fourth page forward, that's the flyer that you have in front of us. This is a special one, surprising death of Michelle Johns, who was a dear friend of ours. She was the administrator of Alter Care. She was one of our biggest sponsors. The Positive Secrets would like to get, collect $500 to pay all the residents, to pay for all the residents to have their hair done for Christmas at Alter Care in Michelle Johns' name. This is something we hope to make a tradition. We'd also like to purchase eight gas cards at $25 each, totaling $200. Eight gift cards from Kroger's for $25 each, totaling $200. And eight gift cards from Walmart for $25 each, totaling $200. What we do with those is we hand them out, we surprise people, and hand them out in the stores. We're asking you city council members to please show your Christmas spirit for a paid forward event, that's another reason why the flyers are in front of you. That is our sponsorship pamphlet, we made it really to get a thought, we mailed it to us. We'd like Mayor Reeser to do us a favor, put in the council on our plans for Red, White and Blues 2018.
Right now?
Sure.
Shortly after Red, White and Blues, 2017 is when we met together, and just some ideas where, you know, to help fine tune some things to an already fine event. And I don't know whose idea it was, maybe it was yours or his.
I think it was yours, Ms. Blues.
It was my idea, okay. I, we suggested then about, you've certainly agreed, which made it possible, moving Red, White and Blues out to the fairgrounds on the day of the fireworks. And we did get approval, Kwanis rents it that day, and that would be great, everything looks good, so that's going to be moved to the fairgrounds on the day. I don't know exactly what day the fireworks are, July 30? Okay, Mr. Foote's here, he's president of Kwanis, and so it's going to be...
Actually fireworks chairman.
And fireworks chairman too.
And he's our friend.
Yes. Yes, so it's going to be a big day for the city, and I think it's going to be a big day for Red, White and Blues too.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
So are we, so are we. Let me see here, we had, this year we did Thanksgiving dinner for the city police, we brought it into the police station, to our other organizations, our civic organizations here in town. Let's all consider adopting one of our service, one of our different service forces for the holidays. We're doing it again, Christmas time, and of course, we opened it up to other safety forces, but I think it would be, we feel it would be really good for each of the organizations to pick one of our safety forces and make sure that the people that work for us and serve us to help keep us safe, to help protect our homes, to help take care of us, you know, pick us up in ambulances and things like that, to make sure that they get a good meal, something special for the holidays when they give us their time. We feel like we'd like to give something in return, so we challenge the other organizations in the city, the other civic organizations, to step forward and adopt our safety courses to make sure that everybody feels a special touch on Thanksgiving, on Christmas. There's holidays that are very special to us, and we hope to make them special for other people.
And send cards, send Christmas cards.
Please.
I have a thousand of them glittering under my bed. Come and get some. They're oranges.
Okay, I guess, and the only other thing is that we're all proud to be Positive Secrets, and we believe that each of us plays a part, whether we're official members, whether we're Facebook supporters, whether we're just people that believe in what we're trying to do, whether we're people that believe in DeSaras and believe in our community.
And I want to say one last thing before we leave. I don't know if y'all knew this, but in September, I almost died. And if it wasn't for Joe Graham, Joe Graham saved my life in the parking lot at Gouding Community Hospital. I was physically dying right there. I was four days in intensive care, I was in bad shape, my kidneys shut down, everything. So, I'm very thankful to be here, I love my city, I love my city council, I don't know, I just love you guys. Well, thank you, we certainly appreciate everything that you do for the city, because you have taken a lot of positive steps in town, so thank you very much.
Can I add one thing too?
Certainly.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, it's a time of a lot of negativity in the whole country, and that seeps into the local community unfortunately. You know, people are all fired up about everything, but you know, when you get, you know, folks like you guys, and I want to single out you especially, who took this idea and ran with it, and so, you know, a fledgling organization, but you know, it takes a while to get it going, and your perseverance has been admirable. Joe, thanks for saving mine too. So, thanks, yeah, so we're, thanks for everything you're doing. Keep it up, keep up the good words.
See, you guys give us a reason.
Keep being positive.
Yeah, you don't have to be negative just because someone else is. Turn that smile upside down.
Turn it...
Forget it, turn it around.
Smile upside down.
Y'all will be, y'all have the form that she handed out with us, handed out to us this weekend, so we'll take advantage of using that. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas to you. Anyone else to address council? Name and address, please.
Vicki Deschawn, 1108 Tocquestra Drive, DeSaras, Ohio. Seven weeks ago, I had a public records request to the city council as a body. My request was for a copy of a memo that Law Director Ratliff stated to me he issued to Council President Love the week of October the 9th, 2017. The memo was in response to my September 25th, 2017 email to Ratliff and council concerning ordinance number 42-2017, which established victim crime advocate funds for fiscal year 2018 and the finance committee, finance committee meeting minutes for September the 7th, 2017. Since I have yet to receive a response, I am here to ask if council plans to address my public records request this evening.
To the law director.
It's a memo issued to the council, it's a 35 memo, if you can release it, if you have the vote to release it or not, it's up to you.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion to release the memo. What's the benefit of keeping it?
I'll second. Motion by Piper, second by Wirebaugh to release the memo to the public. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Memo will be released.
And since it has been seven weeks since I made the request, will I be able to have that copy of the memo yet this evening before I leave?
I don't know what time we're leaving, and...
Well, I'm going to stay with the entire council meeting, so after the meeting's over.
Normally, we're on extra time for the top council clerk to be able to get it, I don't know where it is. It's as simple as that. And we can have it for you first thing in the morning. We'll email it to you, isn't that how we normally send them?
Yes, yes.
We'll gladly email it to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else to address council? No, no one? Moving on to communications and petitions.
We just have one communication, this is from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. It is referring to Nova 8516 LP, doing business as High Minor 2225, 600 South Sandusky Street. This is a liquor permit, class N, or a type N permit. You'll notice on the second page, really all this is, is the owner of the permit, they're changing their name from DVA High Minor 2225 to High Minor 2236. That's really all this is, but we still need to either request a hearing or not, and I need to let the division, let them know if we do or not. We already have the year, the yearly annual permits, all of them for the entire city, it's already health and safety, so we can refer this to health and safety to address at the same time.
Correct. So, I need a motion to address this to health and safety. Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. O'Rourke to send the request for the change of the DVA on the liquor permit to Health and Safety Committee, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. There are no other communications and petitions. I got this out, here I go. Where's the spreadsheet for this?
Oh, we don't always, we have, we have this, the budget meeting.
Okay, okay. We had, we had a special session of finance committee on Thursday, November the 30th, from 2017th at 8:30 a.m. The special meeting was called to order at 8:33 a.m. by Mr. O'Rourke. Mr. O'Rourke, would you like to give us the report, please?
Yes, Special Finance Committee met at 8:33 a.m. on November 30th. Members present were Mr. Wirebaugh, Mr. Piper, pillar of the chair. Item one, Special Finance Committee was called by Finance Chair O'Rourke and finance members Monica Sack, Steve Piper, Dan Wirebaugh. To discuss the 2018 budget, the meeting was called to order at 8:33 a.m. I think we need to go back on the members present.
Correct.
Well, we've got four listed.
Members of the committee, but only three were present, correct? Monica, Sack wasn't there.
No, she was there.
There was one before that.
So... Okay, this is great. Item two, 2018 budget, the committee discussed budget priorities for 2018 in the following areas. A toll on the office to the police department, C, fire department, D, bike path grant, E, city council, council clerk, F, civil service, G, parks, H, sewer separation, I, sidewalk maintenance repair. No decisions were made. The Special Finance Committee was called by committee for 8:30 a.m. on Wednesday, December 6th, to do discussion of the 2018 budget. Piper made motion to recess the meeting, seconded by Mr. Wirebaugh, or recess the meeting at 11:19 a.m.
Any questions or comments regarding this meeting on Thursday, November the 30th? Okay, moving on, DeSaras City Council Finance Committee met in a special session on Tuesday, December the 5th, this evening at 6:45 p.m. Mr. O'Rourke?
Leading December 5th, called to order at 6:45 p.m. by O'Rourke. The meeting was to discuss appropriation for the OPWC Oakwood Waterline Project, and appropriated $2,110.08 towards that line. There's no discussion, a motion was made by Mr. Wirebaugh, seconded by Mr. Piper to make the appropriation, and motion passed. O'Rourke made a motion to recess, and seconded by, motion by Mr. Piper, seconded by Ms. Sack, to recess at 6:48 p.m.
Any questions regarding this recording? Okay, thank you, moving on. We do not have a traffic commission recorder, are there any traffic questions that need to be brought for discussion? I guess I have to bring one up, I know. The, I walked into Dollar General today.
Which one?
The, the one out on Hoppley. And the, I was approached about traffic on Southern Avenue, and I found this incredibly hard to believe, but I was told that people are speeding down Southern Avenue, and I couldn't quite comprehend that. And that even though it's bumpy and everything else, there is also still a stop sign there at the corner of Rogers in Southern. She was saying that several people are just running it now, so maybe we need to draw the attention of the police chief to some Southern Avenue, because traffic is picking up somewhat.
I'll make sure the chief knows.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion to accept committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
So...
Second. Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Wirebaugh, to accept the committee minutes and related reports collectively, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We have to report to city officers, starting with Mayor Reeser.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to wrap up to beginning your Christmas parade, Carol Ann Smith deserves another applause, a great big thank you for all she's done for putting this parade together. It's a wonderful event this year, this year was better than ever. I think it was a huge event, the crowd was good and enthusiastic, so thank you to Carol Ann Smith for all the work you do on that parade. Also, I want to thank Rotary, Kwanis, and Tyler Jacobs from the Chamber of Commerce, who got involved in it at the last minute there to help organize it, did a very good job. We had a little meeting last week with the volunteers and some ideas how we could tweak it and make it better for next year. Mr. Ratliff, we had a lot of fun in the New Art Park, showing movies, a huge hit. So, doesn't need a lot of tweaking, but it is a big event for downtown DeSaras, and we've got some ideas that we threw around at the meeting, so. I would want you to know the budgets process, as you know from the minutes here, the meeting on November 30th is well underway, we have another meeting tomorrow. And we're continuing contract negotiations with the police and fire departments. And finally, let me say a very tearful goodbye to our longtime victim advocate Maggie Malloy last week, so sorry to see her go. She has a very inspirational story, as many of you know. She over... She overcame a lot of things in her life, and now she's moving on to greener pastures, and all of us at City Hall and the City of Ucires will miss her. And she said she'd be back, though, to visit, so, or we could come up and spend some time with her, so. So we wish her Godspeed in her new endeavor. And I think that's all I've got to say. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And we, of course, too, wish Maggie best of everything. How many years has she worked here? Do you know how many years it's been?
No, I don't know.
Was Matt Crawl the original one that started the victim advocate?
Yes, I don't know how many years exactly.
Yeah. It's been a lot, and she's been a very good asset to our community. Any questions for the mayor this evening? None? We do not have a report from the Service Director?
Nothing tonight. Do want to mention, though, he asked me to mention about leaf pickup. Leaf pickup has been going on for weeks now, and there are some late falling leaves, like the pear trees fall very late. There's a lot of them come down this week. If you have, our guys are still out, but if you have specific location where leaves are out in your neighborhood or in front of your house, please call City Hall and let us know, and we'll be out to pick them up, hopefully this week, because once they freeze, they're going to be very difficult to sweep up. So we want to try to get all the leaves up by the end of the week. So please call City Hall at five-six-two-six-seven-six-seven. That's the report from Mr. Wireball.
Mr. O'Rourke?
Have they been out the last two days?
Yeah, they've been out, I think they've been out both days. I didn't know about today, but...
I haven't seen them anywhere.
I think they were across, I think they were uptown. Yeah, I didn't hear. I heard them. Outside.
You can't miss them.
Yeah. Because the guy had straight the picking park, so. Yeah, I haven't seen them anywhere.
Any other questions? Moving on, Law Director.
Thank you, Madam President. Talking about a written report, we have a property maintenance officer, Gordon Grove, is off through the end of the year, but if you have green cards and continue to have property maintenance issues, please don't hesitate to contact my office. We'll endeavor to keep inspecting them. I believe that's all we have. Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke.
I did notice today, because I took down East Street to go home today, that the properties there on the corner of Warren and East, where that one...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Leibig has cleared those final properties. Similarly, the house over on Kayler, that from the side looks like that, formerly was peach colored, the asbestos shingles, asbestos shingles have been removed from the exterior. So first step is that house coming back as well. So we have high hopes for redevelopment over here on Warren Street with Leibig. They worked very hard to get that done, and I know it would be a big help to everybody around Kayler that house is done. I don't know, have we had a meeting since the Rogers Street announcement?
You know, I don't think we have.
What?
I wish to. You can do it again.
Well, the raided stock houses on Rogers Street have been turned over to the land bank. It only took twenty years. But the debt's probably doing it in now, and that neighborhood did this pretty kind of hopefully. We'll start seeing construction crews and inspectors to get those houses on the way down, so I'm very happy about that.
Do we have any word yet on, they're at the old bonded station there at East Mansfield and...
The man I drove by that today, and I thought about that. The last communication I had was with the grant administrative body with the state, and that was about six weeks ago or so, and they told me that they were completing each phase at all the different little stations all over the place, all over the state of Ohio, and then would be circling back to do more. She indicated that it should be much longer, and they come in, clear out the rest of that lot, and then come back in and reseed it. Once that's done, then it'll come back to the city, and the city can decide how, what they want to do with that as far as developing it, or like tree on it, or whatever.
So the small building and all the cement will come out?
It'll all come out.
The tanks are already gone.
Tanks are already gone, and, yeah, it's all ready, just that final scraping, and then they'll fill it back in.
Any questions for the Law Director this evening? Mr. McKeever?
Yes, you and I talked, I was just asking, what can we do to persuade our judge to hold on properties that are possibly get turned over, and he will give them a spat over.
Well, we...
I'm referring to the two properties on South Sandusky, south of Oakwood. There's two garages that are...
Oh, there's a couple of garages there, then there's the house that had previously caught on fire. We have a number of houses. It took, we worked most of the year trying to just kind of inventory and get houses caught up. I forget how many I drew on the list. Gordon gave the numbers, he's here. We've got a number of opinion in criminal court right now. The problem we have is when we get these houses into criminal court, a lot of times it is, they're not situations where, a lot of times it's an owner that's a problem, but a lot of times it's a situation where it's an owner that can't, you know, physically incapable, financially incapable, and that's a real problem. And the court recognizes that as a problem. We don't want to, we're not trying to lock people up, we're just trying to get houses fixed or repaired or bulldozed, whatever they may need. And with Land Bank this year, we had tremendous amounts of success. But I think what we'll be doing, it's our first year, it's a bit of a learning curve with some things, but I think what we're going to be doing in the future and as we progress, obviously we're in the process right now of hiring a new victims advocate, our intent, and Mr. Grove and I have discussed this, our intent is to kind of treat the neighborhood like a victim. And much like we do with zoning and a lot of the other things that we do with property maintenance, we send out notifications to the neighborhoods and say, hey, on this date there's going to be a zoning here, you know, because there's going to be some zoning change here. We want to try to bring that to the property managements as well, and when we have these things that are going into court, when we have these things coming here for appeal to the Property Maintenance Appeals Board, we want to make sure that the neighborhood is informed, that they know that there's going to be discussion about, you know, that property that's in their neighborhood. So, it'll be a big undertaking, obviously, I think, you know, there's a couple hundred houses involved this year. And so a couple hundred houses just involved in property maintenance, that means several hundred neighbors. But I think, you know, we're going to find ways to do that, social media, direct mailing. I think with Rogers Street was a bit of an experiment, and I thought it turned out very successful. And we just went and posted flyers on all the neighbors' doors to let them know that something was happening there. And I think that that was probably the most cost-effective and easiest way. A lot of our sub-luses, you know, aren't fixed up all the time, some are, a lot of them aren't. So I think that's something that we're going to bring to this, to try to make sure that when cases are coming to court, just like a victim in a domestic violence case or a theft case, when cases come to court, the people that are impacted by that property have an opportunity to come to court and be heard as well. So that's something that we're going to work on, on getting done.
But you understand why I'm asking, because this set a premise at south of eight fifteen South Sandusky, or eight thirteen, I'm sorry, can't remember exactly that address. It's on the west side.
Yeah.
That garage has, parts of it have come into the neighbor's yard, and he has a two-year-old.
Yes.
And he has adamantly told me that he already has a lawyer, and if the city doesn't do anything, and I keep telling him, it's not the city, we're doing everything we can.
Well, with a lot of properties, once we get them to court, sometimes they stay there for a while. There's a couple that, yeah, they've granted some extensions, they're waiting to hear on...
West Rensselaer.
Well, that's coming up, you know, these are ongoing cases, so I mean, it's hard to talk about, it's all a bit better. The one on West Rensselaer, we expect some resolution on that this month, two weeks, roughly. So, yeah, we get them in the court, and then that's, you know, that's where my control ends, and somebody else's control takes over, so.
Okay, I'm just addressing that, because I would be really upset, too, if the garage's potential can come down on my grandchildren.
Let me add that, I mean, add that with some number of properties, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Mr. Wireball, you got a question?
Yeah, I couldn't make it to the meeting the other day, I think they were discussing the West Stone.
Yes.
I, what happened, I hadn't seen anything.
It has been...
First of all, tell us everybody what we're talking about, we don't know.
I'm sorry.
These are the apartments that are at nine oh two, nine oh four, nine oh six, West Stone. It is three buildings that are each three apartment units.
Right there by the Fairground.
Behind West Stone Street, about the, well, about Lake Reser and my wagon. They'd be touching on it.
Yeah, they, those, we, he has to file with our zoning officer to, had to get his documents in order, and he, we're having a public hearing on that, because it is, due to it being two years vacant, the previous, it's no longer a zone for apartments. So that has to go to a public hearing. And he has made improvements on it. He, you know, there's a lot, he's got a lot more to go, but, you know, we're trying to help him and trying to work it out, but we also told him if he doesn't get it done, it's not going to make it. But it's to the point of a public hearing for a zoning amendment.
Well, I mean, this, the whole situation, we've been years and years for...
Yeah.
We're going to do this.
Yeah, well, we had three meetings, and one is on north, on South Wiley, which the building should come down, but anyhow. And there's one on east, West Mansfield, west of the old Crows Club, about the third house, the yellow peeling house. He owns the armory also, and another house on Rensselaer. So we're, you know, come to the meeting, please. We have another one coming up, if you'd like to come.
Yeah, I'd love to come, but we're still behind.
Any other questions? None? Okay, moving on to the auditor, Mr. Schiffer.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the state tax position for November thirtieth, and we have revenue tallies to budget, and our usual tax comparisons for the delusional. We're busy working on budget, should have things ready for tomorrow morning. We'll be moving to that.
As we get those, as we finish up with all the stuff tomorrow, we will then have packets, we will have those Thursday evening, distribute to the council members?
Well, depending on what we do tomorrow morning, you know. Yeah.
How much is it?
I also have to get your adjustments done for Thursday, so I'm...
Okay. So not Thursday, Friday, maybe, well, definitely have that, make sure that if I bring them around and drop them off to all of you, you'll all have that so that you have the ability to, so look at it. Okay? Any questions for the auditor? Moving on, you have the Treasurers' Report for November of two thousand seventeen. What's the October?
It's October.
That's October, not November's. Okay. Yeah, okay, it's sort of hard to get there. So we need a motion to accept and file this report.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Truca, seconded by Mr. McKeever, to accept a fellow treasurer's report for October of two thousand seventeen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We have nothing here. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Piper, seconded by Mr. Truca, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we have visitors' input regarding reports of the standing and special committees and of city officers. Does anyone wish to address counsel this evening? No one? For consideration, propose legislation for the first time.
We have one ordinance, ordinance number fifty-three, two thousand seventeen, amending and supplementing ordinance number fifteen, two thousand sixteen, being the annual appropriation ordinance for two thousand seventeen, by appropriating from unappropriated OPC, OPWC, East Street, Oakwood Waterline Funds, the sum of two thousand one hundred and ten dollars and eight cents to the capital outlet line item within the water distribution category within the OPWC, East Street, Oakwood Waterline, sub-paragraph, and declaring an emergency. That is to find...
I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved.
Mr. O'Rourke, second.
Second.
Mr. McKeever? Motion by Mr. O'Rourke, seconded by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor, say aye, accepting this as the first reading.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. The ordinance fifty-three dash two thousand seventeen will go back to, referred back to Finance Committee. At this time, any public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. None? We don't need a recess, do we? Committee reports on pending legislation. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable to ordinance fifty-three dash two thousand seventeen, the water line appropriation.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this report.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sacks, seconded by Mr. Sacks, by Mr. O'Rourke, and seconded by Ms. Sacks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third readings, a proposed ordinance number fifty-three dash two thousand seventeen, which is the water line appropriation, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption of the text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sacks?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-three, two thousand seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number fifty-three dash two thousand seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Sacks?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-three dash two thousand seventeen is duly adopted. Thank you. Old Business, you saw the letter that was passed around this evening for, that we're going to be sending to the post office, as was requested last meeting, so that will be taken care of. Anybody else within the Old Business they'd like to bring up this evening?
Yes.
Mr. McKeever?
I happened to get a phone call from a Mr. Mark Quinn, and Mr. Warbaugh talked to him He addressed me a letter that I'm going to turn over to counsel. I'll read it. Here's a list of concerns I have with the proposed tree ordinance. I believe the second section is okay as long as the trees that can be affected by the city is only trees that cross over onto the city right of way, and the way it is broke, it includes all trees. The distance from curb section should have a four-foot tree lawn area, have no tree at all. high tree will be six to nine feet in diameter unless there's a major pruning done yearly. The other sizes are okay, as long as it is understood that after the tree is six to nine years old, that the lowest limbs have a ground clearance of at least fifteen feet. This is a minimum clearance requirement for electric and phone lines and bridges. The city needs to take ownership of all the trees in the right-of-way, period, because the city owns the right-of-way on all the properties where there is, where there is inlocks, and they have complete control on all right-of-way that is without blocks. As far as the infrastructure protection section of the tree ordinance, it deals with people's property and the right for the city to have the owner remove the trees. The city has the main interceptor sewer on my property, and it runs eleven hundred feet on my property. The city has a thirty-foot wide easement on my property for maintenance repair of the sewer. If they are going to enlarge the area for maintenance, then I should be, then I should be compensated for that. I should not be responsible to do the maintenance. If there are going, if they are going to force me to cut down trees outside of that easement area, they are then crossing the line on property right, on private property rights. In a city, state, or US government, or railroads, I'm sorry, if a city, state, US government, or railroads want to do anything on private property like that, they must compensate or purchase said property, and since they are outside their easement area, they don't have the right, the rights to tell the landowner what to do with this property. They can, however, take ownership of the property through purchase or eminent domain if they have to. Also, with that a hundred-foot area, that would mean few landowners would, um, want to plant any trees within one hundred feet of any su, city sewer. They are adding easements to all the properties in Ucires. And thank you, Mark Quinn.
Okay. You have the envelope?
Yes.
This is dated the fifth, and it was received?
Today.
Today? Thank you, we'll see that that gets to the debating and also to the committee for trees. Any other old business anyone would like to bring up this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Piper?
If I could, I'd like to have the sewer rates referred back to service committee.
The sewer rates?
Correct.
Okay, uh, you're making a motion for that?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, second for that?
Sure.
Mr. O'Rourke? Mr. Pi, motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. O'Rourke, to refer the sewer rates to service committee, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. And thank you. Any other old business this evening? Moving on to new and miscellaneous business. Uh, special, special finance committee meeting on the twenty eighteen budget is tomorrow morning, December the sixth, at eight thirty a.m., up here in council chambers. Uh, Thursday, December the seventh, is candlelight Christmas from five eighty P.M. downtown. Monday, December the twenty-fifth, city offices are closed for Christmas. Uh, the swearing-in of new council members, council president, and city treasurer will be on December the twenty-eighth at seven P.M. Monday, January first, twenty eighteen is also, uh, city offices will be closed for that day. The, uh, annual potluck that council, uh, uh, holds each year will be at the December nineteenth, after the December nineteenth meeting. We'll, uh, get in touch with the, uh, council clerk as to, uh, your participation and what you'll be bringing. Uh, anyone else with newer miscellaneous business this evening? Done? Okay, we're all here this evening, we don't have to excuse anyone. Uh, the joint regular committee meetings, all referrals from this council meeting, and any open project list items may be discussed during the committee meetings. The referrals from this meeting are...
Uh, we've got three new referrals, um, the liquor permit for the high minor on South Sandusky to help in safety from council, the walnut two-way designation, that goes to the traffic commission from council, the sewer rates, that goes back to the service committee from council. Uh, we have already in committee, the year-end transfer adjustments, that's in finance already. Uh, also, we have the twenty eighteen budget is in finance, uh, depending on what happens at the meeting tomorrow morning. The council clerk appointment for twenty eighteen and nineteen, um, that is already in finance, and the, uh, annual liquor permits for all of the permit holders in the city is already in health and safety.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next WBCO radio programs are on Tuesday, December the twelfth, Police Chief Dave Kepke will appear then. Friday, December the twenty-second, Mayor Reeser will be on the radio show. Wednesday, January the tenth, Auditor Joy Schiffer is scheduled to appear, and on Wednesday, January the seventeenth, Councilman Mark McKeever will be, uh, the guest on the show. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by the Sack, to adjourn at seven fifty-six P.M.